So at 5:30 over there on those two.
Okay, we are on YouTube now so we can begin the third quarter financial review. Wednesday, October 16th, 5:45 PM. Let it later. I'm gonna go down. Yeah, probably. We need to get you just one set up over there.
Yeah, you can mic him and stand or a chief to hold it for you.
Can you set it in a coffee cup as a stand for a minute? Well, I mean.
If there's no coffee.
No, there's coffee in it.
Yeah, I got.
We could get you an empty cup. Yeah, you can just set it in there.
Oh, it doesn't have to work. It just have, I just have to hold it. Is that it? Okay.
Welcome YouTubers.
Crazy.
All right, so I'm gonna give you some statistics in your tablets or on your tablets, in your tablets. I don't know which would be more correct. You have the reports that give you all the details. I'm gonna do high level summaries of it. And I'll point out a few things as we go along, but I do have the actual reports. And I can put them up there if you are questioning anything on any of those pages. I think there's like 20 pages or so in there in that 21, 20. There's 20 pages in that report. So I'm gonna start by saying this is where I expose where we are as far as the budget is concerned. But if you have any specific questions, they're your people. There's the one that would be answering the questions that you may have. All right, so I'm gonna talk first about operational and separate it from the capital expenditures. I also want to go into some discussion after we get through this part of it with the budgets for 2025 that are upcoming and we're working on right now. And I also want to give you some information regarding what's been going on, as you know, with the water sewer and a pending rate increase that's gonna be happening at the beginning of the year. And we'll see the numbers as they're flowing through on this review. So the first thing I want to show you is the, this, oh, that is not the first thing I want to show you. Yeah, your page one is this. Yes, your page one is the capital expense report. And what I wanted to point out there is as of right now, even though it says 10, it's 1031, it's as of today. This was the spend that we've had in capital so far this year. In street resurface, we have spent 39% of the $275,000 budget. Capital outlay for improvement projects, we've spent 10.9%, 1.4 out of 13. And that 13 is adjusted by the 1.5 million that was taken out of the sewer and the 1.1 million that was added back in for the water. As far as the capital expenditures is concerned, we've spent so far 46.6. That number's gonna go up a little bit because about 160,000 was just, just today paid for two tractors that were part of the street department purchase. That happened about a week ago and the invoice was just paid today. So percent of capital spend right now in nine months or a little over nine months, 15% for the city. I did go back last month, I mean, last year. 2023's capital spend for the whole year for the city was 39.27%. For 2022, the spend for the whole year was 12.03%. So you can see the trend here. There's a lot of reasons for it. There's a lot of opportunities to save money if these projects get moved along. The capital expenditure seems to be between 50 and 70% normally because that's the tangible assets you buy. As far as the improvement projects, a little more is involved because of the engineering that has to go into it, contractors' availability and a whole bunch of other irrational reasons why. So most of what you're gonna see is this being the difference, this somewhere in the neighborhood of about $10 million being carried over next year into the 2025 budget. Rest assured that nine or probably about 7 million of it's gonna be from the water sewer area. And they do have the ability to get financing for that portion through a bond. So that'll assist. So I didn't know if you had any questions about that portion. So what I wanted to, go ahead. Okay, when I first started doing the capital budgets and we were talking about what is your capital expenditures, that's easy. People say, oh, I've got a quote and it's here's the dollar amount and all they have to do is go out and buy it. And so that's, that part's easy. But the capital improvement projects, some of these projects are a year, maybe a year and a half. Look how long it's taken for the splash pad, for instance. We dealt with that in strategically designing it and the cost that was incurred with the engineering in one year. And so if these are multiple year projects, the way we could hone in on what our spends are gonna be is to budget by the, what you anticipate the yearly cost to be over the project completion period. And that's how most cities would do it. So if you're figuring that this is a third quarter project that we're gonna start in the third quarter, the way we do it now is we budget it and we say the engineer says this is what it's gonna cost. And that's usually budgeting the total project, not how it carries over from year to year. We need to get a little better on, is this a, we start January, we start June, we start September, and then we have to budget what we think those costs are gonna be for that year. And it's a science. It's not a, it's not something that's easily predictable, but you can at least get a little more close. You can say in the budget, this is the total of the project over a three year period. Here's our first year cost, second year cost and third year cost. Factoring in potential increases due to materials and supply inflation. But that's the only way that you would be able to hone it down. We create it because we budget total project. The admin of just, these are, what you're seeing here is the operational financial report for all city operations. You don't see the other, these are all departments that basically have a budget that has revenue streams and expenditures. It's taking out of this budget, the capital, all capital is removed from this. So you're looking at what would the revenue stream support operationally from the expenditures that are operationally driven expenses? So if you were looking at a balanced budget and you say you're gonna hold everybody to balance your budget every year, the projected revenue stream should be your projected expense. That would be it. Otherwise, you're dipping into something. You're dipping into a fund balance. You're dipping into a fund balance of another entity that has funds like the general fund. So what you're seeing here, though, is removing the noise of the capital side and all the capital revenues that come in as associated with grants that fund a project, a capital project. Those have been removed as well. So the revenue streams that's capital related and the expenses that are capital related have been removed. So what you're looking at is the nine month, this is what they did in September. This was the full year so far through nine months. And this was the budget, what they should be doing. So admin of justice, we said that they would be in a deficit of 2,250 based on our budget. If you wanted to see that, you go to the first page of, of the report, which would start on page eight and you would see the detail. You'll see the jail fees and you'll see the act 1256 revenues coming in. So I projected the deficit that we have current for nine months forward for the full year. So they're projected. I'm projecting that they would come in at a negative deficit of $7,650. What you don't maybe not realize is that the admin of justice used to be funded by the county sales tax. We shifted that over to the sidewalk and we stopped funding in a distribution in 2022, that 1% that was going to admin of justice. And the reason is the admin of justice funds amassed about a $70,000 to $80,000 fund balance there that we're working down. We projected this to be a 63, $66,000 fund balance at the end of this year with that $2,250 coming out of that, that surplus that we have in the actual fund. What we're looking at potentially having now is a $63,000 balance. Still not in any kind of a problem. We want to spend that down to allow for that shift of the county sales tax to go to sidewalk because of the demands on the sidewalk projects that are down, coming down the pipe. Animal control, in a good situation right now, there's 9,241, looks like would be the projected surplus on a right now surplus of 6,931. Again, there's a lot of factors that could change that. Could be a lot of housing cost or fees that would come in that are not impacting the first nine months, but would impact the next three. So these are guest estimations, but they were budgeted to have a deficit of 19,000. So they're well up on that. And if you needed to know what some of those reasons are, if you looked at the detail, I could give you some insight as to what those costs were doing, but you would need to have a conversation with the animal control department on that.
Bragging Kyle just for a second right there that she's done a great job of rehoming those animals and just taking care of business in a way that you're not seeing a high cost in those kennel fees up there too.
Excellent, that's, that's good. So this surplus then, if it does end up being a surplus, falls back into the general and admin because that's what's the support for this department. Fire department's the same way. They were budgeted to have a surplus at the end of the year of 22,000 from operations. Looks like right now they're at 141. I don't know if there's any large expenses that are operational expenses, not capital, that haven't hit yet, that wouldn't be normally in that budget. But if we project their current run rate through at the end of the year, they'd be at about $180,000 as a surplus. But historically, we see the fire department spend a lot of money at the end of the year. Fire prevention year, I mean week comes up. And month, yeah. Fire prevention month. And so he's spending a lot of money on that right now because they're doing a lot of promotional items and that might have an influence on significantly reducing that surplus. General and admin, 225,000 would be their current run rate projected surplus. But you look at the amount that's listed there in the annual budget of 375,000, they're about $150,000 under where they should be, even though right now they have a surplus of 168,000. Now, that's just the admin, general, excuse me, an admin department, not the general fund. Because the, the loss that's here or the amount that's 150,000 short on this would, this 188 would kick back into it. So it would negate it, if you know how that works. Parks department, $3,500, $3,500 is the current surplus, but their budget surplus was supposed to be about 24,006. And their projected run rate would end up about a surplus of 4797. Parks department had gone through it quite a bit as far as some of the unusual activity that occurred operationally. And a lot of the shifting of money happened already to the street department, for instance, because they've, 70, $7,500 a year. I think you're budgeting 10 next year, right? It's 7,500. Yeah, we didn't, we didn't up it for this year. As far as the planning department is concerned, they're 30,000 up on an $18,000 budget surplus. So they're favorable. Police department, whoop, let me go back down. Police department is $466,000 deficit, realizing that they do not have city sales and use tax to fund their capital. 349,000 is their actual right now deficit on a deficit of 653 operationally. That deficit's actually a little more because the capital would be, is not included in there. So I think you had 148, right now you have 148,000 in capital. For capital expenses, 100 and maybe 150. So you, you added 150 to that 653, you'd be about $800,000, which is what their overall budget was for them to have as a deficit. But operationally, they're ahead of their budget. Sewer is three departments now. And one of the things that I wanted to point out on the sewer department is some of the costs, we didn't really have a handle on exactly how we wanted to divide them up between collection and plant because this is the first year that we're actually maintaining two ledger accounts, the collection department and the plant department. So one of the things that you'd see on here, if you go on to, I think it's page, let me go back. Police, street sewer. Page 21 and page 22 of that report. You would see utilities, for instance. We just took the total amount of utilities for the sewer department last year and we split it in half. And we gave half of it to collections and half to plant because we didn't have any run, any rhyme or reason to be able to have a valid number for what it was gonna cost to run the plant versus the collection area. So you're gonna see plant right now is, utilities is $98,000 on a budget of $78,000. So it looks like they're over by about 20 grand right now in nine months. But if you go over to the sewer collection department, they have $78,000 and their run rate right now is 32,000. So they're ahead of their budget in the utilities, which probably will pan out correctly for the rest of the year. It's just not in the right area. And at the end of the year, I plan on actually making the journal entry to move it from one to the other so that it, you'll be able to read it a little better. I'm not panicking over that. You may when you look at those numbers, but that's the reason why. And there's a couple other ones in there that are like that as well because we didn't have a way of actually determining with any kind of reliability what dollar amount to put in there. So the sewer O and M, which is your revenue side of the two expense sides, the sewer O and M budget we had at a million six, and that's with 118% increase this year over last year. That's due to the rate that we put in for the, you're paying for the sewer in your utility bills. Looks like our amount is fairly accurate. Right now, we're running at about 121% based on the number of customers and the usage, the sale of the water because that's how they get their revenue stream. So it looks like we're gonna end up more, a little bit more, so that's good. We're at a million two right now. Usually, they're slightly under a million, but the rate increases given them some needed boost in covering their operational expenses. The operations for, projected for the collection department is favorable as well as the sewer plant. So they're about half a million dollars under in the, the cost centers of collection and plant over what their budget is from operational perspective. Remember, none of this includes the capital. Water distribution, it's kind of the same way, the water O and M. You're looking at a revenue showing the increase of 2.8 on a 2.6. So waters, waters faring just as, probably even a little better as far as where we're projecting the revenue stream to come in. However, the next three months, we do, we do see a drop off in the usage of water. So that revenue stream won't be as robust. This number comes from this divided by nine times 12. So that's where we're anticipating the revenue. That's assuming that you get the same amount of revenue every month, the same. January, February and March is lower than the summer months and it evens out. So it should be fairly close. As far as the water office is concerned, that's one that might have caught your eye because we're budgeting a million 40,000 on water office. And they're at 931,000 already as far as their operating expense. They don't have capital to speak of. So they're projected to be at a million two on a, and you wonder, wow, that's just three girls in an office over there. How's that, how did, how did that happen? Well, I can actually show you how that happened. If you were to go to the water report, which would be page 25 in that screen. I don't have it up there, but you had a rate increase in sanitation this year. And that sanitation rate comes in as the form of revenue, so it's in this O and M up here. That's part of why you have a larger increase than we were anticipating. But then you also have in this expense side, you have us paying the cards for their increase. So that increase wasn't planned on. And even though there's the revenue offset, when you look at the cost center for water office, they're bearing the cost to that. So that's one of the big reasons. Plus, the sales tax is also gonna be a little bit over because you pay tax on the sanitation as well. So fact that sanitation went up, the sales tax went up as well and that it's all paid out of the water office. So, so they're, they're, if you, if you were to remove that increase, and I think they may have, they may have had two. I'm not sure. Increases, I think one at the very beginning of the year and then they asked for another one. But it was a rather significant increase. And the water plant, same. All of these, these departments underwater is tracking or progressing fairly well against budget. Now I want to talk about the street. This is without operating, without expenses for the capital, rather. None of the capital expenditures, none of the capital improvement projects are in this. Even though capital expenditures were budgeted under the street department, it's not a typical operating expense when you have city sales and use tax that's supposed to be covering that as well as state turnback. Most of the capital projects, capital improvement projects are road related. And so what's removed from this in order to come down to their operating expenses here, on the first line, this would be just like all the others. I removed the capital from it and I removed all of the revenue that's associated with the capital, excluding the turnback. The turnback is still in these numbers because that's where it's always been booked. But the year to date, January through September, they're looking at a $47,000 surplus, operationally speaking, and an $87,000 budgeted deficit. So projecting their revenue over their expenditures, that'd be at a surplus of 62,000. On the surface, that looks good, except they have turnback. And the turnback is $850,000. And it's sitting there for street and drainage expenses. So I removed the turnback, but I also removed the line items that are associated with street drainage and anything that has to do with street and drainage repair and maintenance. If you looked at just taking all that out, what their revenue stream is for their operations, you're looking at a $508,000 deficit right now. And a yearly deficit or the annual budget deficit of 733. So they're projected to be better than the budget with all those extracted, but that's a significant overspend from their revenue stream. Just operationally speaking. This is a different way for looking at it because when you add in the capital improvement projects that are not done, it was masking that because they were, that was making up for this and that wasn't its designed purpose. So that's why I say that if I had a going concern issue, it would be this department and it would also be, to some extent, parks.
Correctly, but you're saying that their actual expenses for streets repair and governors and drainage was really going to other places.
No, no. The, the street drainage and the street repairs and everything that was in the street operating budget is covered by this turnback. So I removed the turnback because it's related to, to what its restricted purpose is, but I removed the expenses also that are for and paid for from that turnback. When you remove that, you're left with what is the other revenues and like property taxes? And what is that covering as far as their operations? And by their operations, that's their, their office supplies or sign department thing and it's costs associated with their salaries. That's all in this. It's everything else. So that's just a quick and dirty on it.
Oh, we, we all know, or I say we all, we do know, the street's been headed in this direction for a while. And there was a discussion a few years ago about a reallocation of county tax to street. Does that, still ponder that when you're, when you're pondering or is that? I mean, I don't know what the answer is to.
Well, to give you a good insight, if you were to go through and look at all of these financials for all of, all of the departments, county sales tax, which is the only one you can redistribute, is down 5% below last year, below our budget, rather. So that's 5% revenue stream from the county that's pulled out of every one of those departments. So they're already having to make adjustments operationally to cover that. If you were to redeploy, you may look at the pre-distribution redeploying because you're pulling 10, $40,000, $40,000 off the top for Lofi. And you could shift that burden back to the police department because they're already bearing the remainder of it and/or fire, both. Police and fire would have to bear that. But county sales tax, you guys allotted that as a pre-distribution amount. You also have a pre-distribution to the Boys and Girls Club. Those are the only two that you do that way. All the rest are contract and we take it out of the general, general fund. So if you wanted to shift some of that, you could. If you were to take it from, if you were gonna shift or redeploy the post-distribution amounts, the percentages, then you're going to impact some of the other departments. One of the biggest departments that you would impact would be public safety because both fire and police get it. Police being 50% of it. Remember, they don't have city sales and use tax. So it's something that when we look at our budget next year, we definitely want to look at. I think for the last two years, I've shown you that two more years from now, you're gonna be looking at if the projects, if the projects that are on the books are done, you're looking at borrowing $3 million for the projects they already have on the books. You can see that, by the way, if you go to the first few pages of there. I gave you the fixed assets listing, capital expenditures and improvements by department. I gave you the current budget. I gave you the current, what has yet to be expended. You have that report there in your, on your tablets. And it says up to date, as all of the budget resolutions that you just approved at the last city council meeting are reflected in this report. Even the police department's redeployment of the Sally Port amounts have been listed now. So that's a good one to study. If there's some things that you look, you want to look at and say, what have you done? Or what's the holdup on that? These are, this, this report gives you it. And it ties to that, oh, I just gave you, this one right here. The numbers on these reports, that number's on the center point system.
If that didn't make you nervous enough, considering, considering we gotta renew our tax, sales tax.
26.
26. If that were to fail, that would be. Fail, that would be devastating.
Yes, and think that it's three for one. It would affect parks, fire and, and street. So. Not giving you any answers. I'm just kind of telling you where you are. All right. So one of the things that I wanted to do is show you a little bit about what we're doing for budgeting for next year. National COLA was set at two point five percent. Most of you already know that. The cost of living in Arkansas for this year going into next year, Arkansas is eight percent lower than the national average. They gave me a summary. They told me that the cost of living in Arkansas. For housing is twenty three percent lower than the national average. Utilities are six percent lower, but that's. Till we raise our rates again. I'm just kidding. When it comes to basic necessities, food and clothing, groceries are hun, are one percent higher and clothing is one percent higher. Than the national average. Healthcare services are eleven percent lower in Arkansas compared to the national average. Excuse me, at the same time, non-necessity expenses such as entertainment and grooming are one percent higher.
Why is clothing and groceries higher than anywhere else?
Now, I wouldn't know that.
Because I mean. The ones that are going to that, they're based in Arkansas, Tyson, Walmart. Dillards.
I understand.
No, we're not grooming more than anybody else.
Now, remember, this isn't Greenwood. This is, this is Arkansas, the state of Arkansas, so. I pulled this right off of the, the national, the website that refers to each state's comparison. So if you were to look at Arkansas being eight percent lower, that means we're ninety two percent of the two point five, which puts the state of Arkansas's COLA at two point three. Right? Little bit more. This is the cost of living in Greenwood. They do break it down by city. Cost of living in Greenwood is thirteen point three percent lower than the national average. Greenwood's prices were, though, however, up one point two percent from a year ago. Largest increases were found in transportation, food and housing. It's probably going along with just about everywhere. So you say, well, how does that compare to the other major cities in this city, in the state of Arkansas? There they are. Little Rock is five point three percent. Lower than the national average. The only one that is actually. Better than we are is as far as how much lower they would be would be Pine Bluff. Fifteen point two percent lower than the national average. See, even Arkansas is more expensive. Thirteen point three.
You could compare Pine Bluff with Gaza. It's probably lower there too. Since it's all been blown to pieces.
Yeah. But they have a casino.
Ain't much.
Yeah. So here's the cost of living compared to the national averages for Arkansas. Cost of living and housing, buying and renting is twenty three percent lower in Arkansas than the national. Average utilities, six percent's lower, food is four percent lower in the state. Healthcare is eleven percent, transportation eight and goods and services one. Percent higher. But this is something that we pointed out when we were looking at the budget for parks. If you move to Greenwood from one of those cities. You would have these changes in your cost of living. So we need to be targeting San Francisco. Come here, save a hundred percent. You would save fifty eight percent from moving from Washington, but even Dallas, coming up from Dallas. There, you, you would actually gain twenty point three percent more of your monies, buying power coming up here.
A lot of people in California are moving this way.
They are.
They're ending up in my neighborhood and they're weird too.
They must know that we're thirteen point three percent lower. Than the national average. Yep. So that's the, from the budget side. Now I do want one more thing I want to point out before we open it up to. A forum on some of the details. And I do want to say that you have the details in front of you. You may not have had obviously enough time to look at them. But when you sit down with a cup of coffee on the weekend and you're just relaxing and you want to. You have nothing better to do than look at the Greenwood finances. And you have some questions, write them down and give me a call or stop by. I'll be happy to go over that with you and maybe shed some additional light or some color analysis on what your questions would be. I have no problem in doing that anytime. As far as the wastewater accounts receivable, one of the things that we do now is we give the. Water commission. We. We give them this figure, which basically tells them what's going on with our. Over sixty days past due accounts in the water department as far as the utility bills are concerned. As if you look at January of twenty four, we started the year at forty nine nine and right now we're at sixty three. Now, the bleeding has stopped. These. Amounts that are passed to over sixty days are. Customers that no longer have service. So there's no, they're more continuing, we're not. These people's water is shut off and they're gone. They moved, they're. Went to a different state and they didn't pay their final bill and. But we discussed as, as the water commission is concerned is the fact that the deposit. Used to be enough to cover a final bill and then we would send them the, the amount that was over. That they had paid more. That's not the case anymore. The amount of the bill is far exceeding, exceeding the amount of the deposit. And so there was some discussion about raising the deposit. There's also some discussion about what do we do as far as collecting that sixty three thousand dollars. We do have a, a rule, it's a kind of a policy under the water commission that said. That after two years, you can write that off. Well, that, we don't want to just promote that because that doesn't give any incentive for people. To pay their final bill and hold them accountable for. And what you have to understand too, is that the people that are living here and paying their water bill are having to. Bossed. That's part of the problem. But. The increase was twenty six point three percent. Since the beginning of the year. A lot of it happened right here in March when the full effect of the rate increase went in. And you see what happened. Now, these were collections. Some of the people came back and they, before they could get service reestablished, they had to pay their old bill. So. That does happen from time to time. We also have agreements with some of the other cities around. That if they go and get water service there, they're on a list and says you. Not only up. Pay this dollar amount that will remit. Keeps, keeps cutting out. Now, this is the number of past due accounts. Since the beginning of the year, we were at one thousand seventy. These are over sixty day old accounts. And it's now eleven hundred and fifty eight as of August. September was a little higher than that. But that's an eight point two two percent. Increase. In the number of accounts. All right. Shut offs. This is, these are people that actually do have an account and they are active. And they didn't pay their bill. They went past the, the penalty date and the shut off came, date came. And they had to have their water shut off. For the record, the month of September's numbers are not reflected in here because we haven't had the meeting with. Water wastewater commission yet. But it's a hundred and eleven in the month of September. So you see where we've been. Kind of vacillating back and forth. These are the amounts that are accounts that were established as cutoffs. They do not actually cut off. All of those that are listed there. There's some people that come in and they negotiate. Payment terms or they initiate an extension for various reasons and they're granted, especially if they. This was the first time that they may have gotten in this situation. So. But that's what the system had in it at the point we established work orders to shut off accounts.
But I guess, I mean, they haven't really. They increased due to the, to the water.
Now, the increases that we're seeing are the people that are not having service anymore and not paying. Now, these could fall into that category. If we shut off the water, let's say that's eighty three accounts right there. We shut off the water. And fifty of them come back and pay and get their water reestablished and thirty three don't. Well, they're going to roll into the sixty day. So. But at least the bleeding stopped. So I, I bring all that up for this reason. This is the combined utility bill. That we've elected or established through this council and the commission. This first year is what went into effect this year. The water. Rate went from thirty three and a quarter to forty dollars and forty five cents. The sewer went from eighteen to forty dollars and eighty cents. And then the, at this point. We're just going to say that the sanitation was the fifteen sixty, even though they had a rate increase. John Q Public doesn't, they just see the water bill or the utility bill, whatever they want to call it. And they don't understand that sometimes what's on there that made the water bill go up. Wasn't necessarily water usage or the rate for the water. It was. Sanitation or something that we are using, we're being used as a pass through. As far as next year, though, there's going to be a sixteen dollar and five cent increase. In the water bill because it's coming off of fixed costs. Not the variable, not how much water you use. That rate didn't change. But the fixed cost, and these are all based on a four thousand gallon per month average customer use. This is going to. Might have some residual impact on what I just discussed. One of the things I do want to point out is here's water and here's sewer broken out. Over the two-year period, there is a two percent annual increase. Planned in the actual rate study for the cost of living, for the CPI. As you know, the COLA is two point five, so we're not far off on that two percent. Increase. Now, that two percent annual was built into these first two years, but twenty six, seven and eight, you're seeing what the sewer and the water bill would be going to. And that's what I'm using to budget by, based on customers, average usage. And historical data that I have. I'm projecting revenues based on those rates. Six oh five. Yeah. I'm pretty sure it was us. They're wholesalers. I mean, they sell water to municipalities, but they also provide to customers too. I think James Fork had to have one. Because they do, they directly supply to. Right?
All of them did, Milltown, James Fork, everybody.
Yeah.
How many providers are in Arkansas? Okay.
Yeah. So the question is. In that rate, there's also built in. The debt service. Factored into that. We're not at a stage based on our spend and our push off to twenty five and twenty six. For the need to go get. A bond. So. It's a, it's a double edged sword. Do, do you continue as though? This. Effect for the bond when it does happen and you have the money, you have the additional. Cost related to pushing something down the road as well. Or do you entertain any idea of pushing back? Six months to a year, the second phase of that rate increase. Now, there's positives and negatives to both. That's the million dollar question for the water commission.
I think that we've already kind of gone through the. Shot value of a presentation, you know, to me, it's kind of everybody's. Knows about it, knows what's going to happen and, yeah, they might have forgotten it. But. We've already kind of done it, you know, so I might as well stick to the plan. So if they, oh, push it all six months, but. They look good, you know.
Yeah, we'll let, we'll discuss that further in the commission. I just wanted you to see this. Because it's all going into the, what I have to consider for the budgets for twenty twenty five.
I, I know. This is a news enforcement, you know, when they find out their rates increasing water and sewer and stuff, you know, they also said that, you know, they have. Another benevolent commission or whatever, you know, that they said that, that, you know, they have, you know, for people that, you know. Difficulty with the new rate increases or something like that, you know. And I, yeah, I think my, you know, what's all involved with that, you know, with, with our billing system, you know, to say, well, of course. Yeah, my bill is, you know, a hundred, a hundred and five dollars. I would pay a hundred and ten, but the whole bridge go to, you know, this, you know, the Nellup fund.
No comment. I don't know if operational revenues were designed for that purpose. We didn't build that into this rate. When we, when we met with Hawkins and Ware and. Man who put all this together, we funneled in what the expenses and the costs were over a projected five-year period. And no goodwill was built into that. At all. So. Usually that comes from a lend a hand program or something like that where. People that want to round up their bill and we can dump that in to help. But then again, you have to have a program that. Equitably distributes and then you'd have to write that and you'd have to make sure that everybody is treated fairly and how the money's dispersed. So. I didn't think they wanted to get involved in that kind of a project at this point.
If it's good news, it's the two percent. Annual, because if you don't do that, we're right in five.
Five years.
Something, something, you're right back to where you were and it's, that's bad.
Right. And they have the option, the commission has the option of. Saying we're just going to go with the two percent, even though the, the cost of living is higher. They, they don't have to. That's something that's variable for them. But you're right. I mean, they set the threshold. We set it at, at least two percent. Okay. So there you have it. In a nutshell, I wondered if there was anything else. That I wrote. Okay, in the Parks CSUT fund. There is, there was a final bill of a trail lighting invoice that came through. This is an anomaly. So it's, it's skewing the. Amount expended numbers because it's not in the actual budgeted numbers. It's a hundred and eighteen thousand because the final bill for that trail lighting came in after the first of the year. Even though the budget was. In two thousand twenty three, not in twenty four. And because we were, that invoice came in at the time we were approving the budget, it was not carried over. But it's been, it's being reported and you do see it. So it is an amount was budgeted. It was not formally carried over and the number was not added in to the budget number. But they're living with, within that.
So since it wasn't carried over, was that in this role by end of the?
Well, General was going to pay it, the, this not General, the general funds park city sales and use tax restricted virtual account. Was going to pay it anyway. It was budgeted to be paid in twenty three. So the fund balance was going to be impacted by that amount anyway. So it, it's, it's. So it, it's, it's, it's just a reporting issue as far as how you look at those numbers. It looks like they've done a lot more this year against this year's budget than they did because there's a hundred and eighteen thousand spent that was in twenty-three budget. Wanted to point that out.
Your opinion, you know, I mean, do we need to make any kind of modification or anything to the budget now or this year?
As you saw, most of the operational budgets are in good shape as far as where they budgeted. What we have to consider for, you're going to start next month, hot and heavy, budget review sessions for the twenty-five budget. So I'm giving you ideas as to what you should be looking for as far as how do you want to hold them accountable when they submit the budgets, instead of just saying, what's your pay? What's your capital expenditures? And how does, how does this budget stack up in previous budgets? And yeah, we can live with it and go. What's, what's it doing to your fund balance? I think if you looked at it being a balanced budget for the operational departments under General, you would see more where the money is going as far as, I'm not going to use the word poorly budgeted, but I would say overestimated. We, we need to be looking at, you know, I'd say that a good job of it, and I think all of the directors would do it, but I know Casey does. When he does his budget, he goes and gets estimates on some of the tangible assets, and he knows what that cost is going to be. And I know Jeff does the same thing. Jeff goes out and gets quotes. Now, sometimes the quotes are old when he actually goes out and tries to buy them, and then he has to come back to you and ask for the over it. And I think that's happened about three or four times. But you got to look at when you're budgeting, you need to be budgeting in a little more conservative manner, if you will. Not, I don't know what it's going to be, so I'm going to estimate high, because guess what? You'll, you'll always be below your budget. So we have to look at how realistic that number is. Capital-wise, I would say the best thing to do would be to look at your project's timeline. How realistically is this a project you're going to get done this year? We initially, I use the big project for Parks as an example, the Splashpad. The high hopes was that it would be totally done and ready at the September. And then it was, well, now we're looking at, hopefully it'll be done by the end of the year. And now it's being pushed into the spring of next year. So, you know, these, these kind of projections, we have to look at, what is, what did history teach us? And then budget numbers accordingly. I specifically asked about the inclusive park because we moved, obviously due to the cost associated with the Splashpad, two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand that's committed to the inclusive park into two thousand twenty-five. So, given where they are in their fundraising, I wanted to know, is it realistically? And I asked him in the budget meeting that we had with the commission. I said, are you anticipating spending any or all of that in two thousand twenty-five? And his answer was, he looks to do it, and they're going to implement it in phases. So our money would probably be a good bet that that would be a good budget item in two thousand twenty-five and spent. And he's locked in at the two seventy-five.
Well, I like your idea of, you know, for the bigger projects, you know, kind of to, on a timeline, saying what's basically going to hit in twenty-five,
I would like that, but that's turning a Titanic around. That's not how they're used to doing it, and it is something that we're going to have to look at. There's another concept that I want to introduce that I really think we should start holding people to. And that is, as, as an example, as an example, I would say that when you spend a dollar on a capital project or on a tangible asset, you have to look at economic value added. Or, as you like to call it, or people that are in business like to call it return on investment, return on equity, whatever. You need to be looking at, is this dollar going to return something back to the community either now or in the future? And it's got to be more than the dollar you spend, otherwise it's not a good project. Every business that I work for coming into this one, anything that we proposed to do that had a significant cost to it, we had to be able to justify its economic value added. And sometimes it's intangible, it's not a tangible return. It's an intangible return, like Parks is a great example. If Parks draws people to the community, it increases the, the sellability of, or the livability within your community. So to build a park, just to build a park isn't what you need to do. You need to strategically put them where the people would be getting good access to it. And you need to be designing it such as the all-inclusive park or the inclusive park for all, more than just a certain select few. But you need to be looking at how that's going to come back to the community in the, in the future. How that's going to come back in the return of that dollar. If you, if you have a ten, twenty-year-old truck that's on its last legs, you definitely need to look at getting a new one. But if you're looking at buying something just because you got to have it, just because it's the new and latest and greatest, you need to be considering how that, how long it's going to take to get a return on that dollar you spend. It's the first thing I'm going to look at when I see the budgets. Uh-oh, you missed everything I just said.
In your circle, what is the prognosis for twenty-five? Do they see a recession or slowing of the economy, or, you know, do they have a soft landing?
Now, that's going to, I'm waiting, I read the economic reports every day. I get two of them, I get one from Regions and one from Stevens. And I look at both of their experts as far as what they're predicting. And everybody's predicting an optimistic view in two thousand twenty-five as more of a recovery. They did predict, and I did share with you at the beginning of the year, that there would be a slowing of the spending, and you're seeing that. You saw that in the sales tax in this area. But they're saying it should rebound next year. I'm not so sure. I'd like to see what happens in the election to see whether I'm as optimistic. Just so you know, I'm budgeting all the revenue streams for them, from the tax basis, flat, with the exception of city sales and use tax. City sales and use tax, I'm going to do whatever it came in. So if it's a three-percent growth, it may be a three-percent growth next year. I'm a little more optimistic on the city sales and use tax side than I am the county. The county will be flat. I will budget that at, whatever we get this year is next year's.
One of the things, it's going to take probably a year or two, Tom, I don't know if you, or maybe longer, to see a lot of the departments. We've talked about this a lot, it's an, I keep, I've heard on it a lot, but they, they've done it. And so it's going to take a while to see the benefit out of this spreading of wealth with these engineers. They're able to get some of these projects off the ground. I know Casey has, and sidewalk stuff, and just by utilizing other engineers. That's not a dig at anybody that's, we've been had for years because they do a great job. But we bought them down with water and sewer, who still uses them, as they should. But it may take a while to see the benefit of that because the project can get done quicker than they would have borrowing a holdout on a sidewalk easement or something that sometimes drags these things on for six months, longer than they should have. That benefit should roll around, I would think, in another year or so.
There's one-
As you know, I'm sorry, the longer we're put off, and the longer it's stuck in an engineer's hands or an architect's hands, the, the all- that million-dollar project becomes an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar project.
And there's one other thing that impacts the ability to get something done quick. And that is, you have to do a coordinated dance with two other departments, for instance. That's what happened with the Splashpad. Parks had to deal with water, well, three departments, water, sewer, and street. So it was a, the slowdown, and if it was just drop a Splashpad in, it's one thing. But if you have to drop a Splashpad in, wait for water and sewer to get there, he's coordinating with the electrical company to come in and do their work, plus he has to do, deal with the street department to build a road. That adds to the delay that's outside of his control.
Fire, you know, when the one-eight-eight fighter stuff is going to start picking up.
Well, you hear, you hear different things in the meetings I go to. It's, the last, the last probably sensible comment was, you're going to think that they're gone, and you're not seeing anyone today. You don't hear the F-35, or you may have, but, but the comment was made, and then they said, I'd say a year, I think the comment was a year, this is a couple of months ago, but within a year, then you'll start seeing a difference. You know, and I know the number they throw when they say, whatever, it's a huge number of, of, of benefits should be for our area, all of us. So, I don't have, I don't have that you're looking for, probably. But it, it's going to take a little while.
Yeah.
Well, and you, you know, you see Fort Smith, they're, they're, they're building like crazy, and it's amazing. And you kind of sit in that go, why do they really have people to rent those? And then you can drive by, on the interstate, for instance. You look real close at those duplexes and those triplexes, I guess. We've got something sitting out back, so somebody's paying rent. Whether it's, whether it's the F-35 project or not, I don't know. But supposedly, within a year to two years, before I have the projection, you'll start seeing a big difference. And we, we have in Greenwood, and I, you know, compared to Fort Smith, we're not there, we're not going to be Fort Smith, don't want to be necessarily, but, you know, we've got people from Lockheed Martin here already, Buddy's not here. He, he sold houses to Lockheed Martin employees and, and a few others that are connected. It may not be direct at thirty-five, but it's connected to it, so.
That's a little beat at the farmer's market on Saturday to start a Lockheed Martin employee.
Yeah. And, and I'll tell you another one, too, is, is the osteopathic. What that thing that's going on up there in the upstairs, or, or, not that building, but the, what's that other building that I've gone to? Yeah. What, what they're doing upstairs in those facilities is nothing to do with F-35, but that's a, that's major stuff that they're bringing in people to be trained and go to school and be, in the medical field. I mean, that, that's kind of low-key unless you go up there. You don't hear a lot about it, but that's huge. And they're not, they're not just coming in to stay six months. They're, they're coming to stay, especially with those numbers Tom put up for.
I think it's a big benefit, just like, I mean, like, just like University of Arkansas is the best, I think it's a, it's a big benefit for this area.
We're on a cusp of some pretty major stuff. I know it's hard to see.
Tom, if students, you know, like, on the county, is some of that just a result of the, the government's spending, I guess, is, is kind of finally subsided to, or whatever, you know? I mean, there's one time we all, and that flux of like $100, you know, but there's other things that were out there that-
No, I think it's the, the rate of inflation caught up, and people are cautiously optimistic, but they're exercising a lot more restraint in their purchasing. The numbers that I showed you the other day, I, I think the key to look at was the fact that the state went up one-point-six-five percent countywide for all counties, but Sebastian County dropped three-point-two-five percent for the same period. So that means that the buying, the, the purchasing of products and goods and services here in the county lagged behind. They're going somewhere else to buy, if they're, if they're still buying. Realize also that that three-point-two-five percent impacted, is impacted by inflation. So, like I said at the meeting, I believe on Monday, that we had, is that they're not buying as much, but they're paying more for it. So the, you, you do see a big drop-off. If I remove the impact of the rate of inflation over that same period of time, year to, from year to now, then it would be even worse. But remember, if the cost goes up, you're paying tax on that inflated cost. This is the water office that you see up there in the screen. This is what I was talking about when I said sanitation. This was the budget that was adopted with a little bit of an increase factored in, but it was far from the increase that we've experienced and for a far longer time than we anticipated the increase to come in. We thought it would be in July, and I think they did a minor adjustments earlier than that. But even if they didn't, it was a significant one. We're already at five-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars in bills paid for sanitation, two cards, and five-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand was the budget. So we only have four thousand left. That's going to exceed what we anticipated, but you got to realize that in the water O and M, right? That was, been above it. Right there. Water O and M, the transfer for sanitation, we budgeted at that same five-hundred-and-fifty-eight, we're a hundred-and-thirteen-thousand dollars short. And that's primarily because the collections don't jive, it's a month back. It's a month lag from the actual bill that we pay. Because when we pay the bill, then we put it on the bill, and then they pay it a month later. So. So we're about seventy-nine percent collected in the revenue stream. All in all, it should wash. What else? The interest income is much higher, as you see in the water sewer side, primarily because we thought we were going to drain the six million dollars that was in the account due to the construction projects that we were, had planned for this year. And if we did, had we done that, that amount that was in the bank would be earning much less interest than it currently is. Because right now, it's close to seven million dollars. And so the interest rates that we're getting, you know, the twelve thousand dollars is ten thousand more than what we anticipated as far as the budget.
That's good, but I see with the, that possibly referring to lower rates, you know, it might be less major than this year.
They are, the feds did lower the rate, and it does affect us positively. What also affected us positively was our bond rating. So borrowing, if we do go for it sometime next year, will be a little more favorable than what we had originally got as a projection from the two companies that came and represented themselves for the potential of a seven-million-dollar bond. Now, we're not even sure we need seven. It may be a slightly less amount, could be anywhere from four to six. See what else. So.
A lot of times, it just arose in picture.
I think so. Read between the lines.
If, if it doesn't do anything, it should give you food for thought. Because I always say, their job is to come and tell you what they want and need. Your job is to ferret out the real needs and the real wants. And that means you have to challenge them. And if they're not ready to, to answer your challenge question, don't just accept what they tell you, make and prove it to you, if it's something that's significant cost associated with it. I'll ask for, did you research any alternatives to it?
I, how about our, the city's share of the brick grant? I know it was, it was a cost share, we've talked about maybe one or two properties that kind of, where we use that money to install.
Yeah, it's already in your budget, brick grants under, if you go into your, I think it's ninety. It's in the general fund, it's under general and admin.
Is that a total amount, or is that what?
Well, that's the total amount. You also have grant revenue coming in from that because that's a reimbursable grant. We don't get paid back, we have to pay it all out. Those, those are the three properties. I think, aren't you closing on one?
I believe so. Tracy has not given us, and Hunter's a lot closer to that than I am because she's the, he's the direct contact on it. But there was some difficulty, I call it that, with her getting that done, I don't know where- But there was some difficulty, I call it that, with her getting that done, I don't know where-
We got a call from harvest.
Did you?
Yeah. It is.
Yeah.
Oh, 7525. 7525. So the, I think the three properties that are here, the 95,000 is the three properties.
Yeah, and, and to your comment, it was taken down to three. Was it what you kind of asked a while ago? Cause it was, they were looking at seven. And it was decided to better manage and better control, I guess, was to take it to three and-
Complete those three.
Yeah.
I think our total on it was $330,000. Is what ours would be. This dollar amount that's in there reflects the amount of the properties that we're looking at completing this year.
And they were the worst.
Yeah, right.
And those are the, the hot spot or the-
And you say one's closing now?
I believe that's right.
Would, would that be on page 11 or?
Page four. It's on your cap, it's on your capital report.
Cause that is on items.
Not operational.
Susan asked me about repaving some roads over there. And that's all I said, I think the plan right now is to get those houses removed without tearing up the road, assuming more than what we have to do and then going into the parking lot.
And, and I, is that somebody that lives there in the neighborhood?
Carla? Carla?
No.
Okay.
No.
I had one of those same things you're talking about.
Yeah, and the street department, just not here, he's, but they've gone over. I've, I've requested, and I don't know what's the latest time they've gone over. But I said, go over there and, and take your latest, greatest machines and, and material that you've got and try to maintain that the best you can until we get ready to go in and remove some homes, like Sid, you wanna overlay it and then tear it up.
They were fine with that explanation.
Well, there's one, there is one lady that is not.
Are we tearing those down ourselves or?
Sir.
Is that a contractor or are we tearing them down ourselves?
That will be, that will be contracted out. Hunter has those numbers. I think it was a Meeker that we, we talked to about it. That, that is not a signed contract yet, but it was. That's who he, that's who he got some numbers from.
Yeah.
Well, he did a good job on the house on, on Denver.
Yeah.
We, we took, we had that one gone and it's- Oh my gosh, that's, they're already, they're padding up there.
They're padding up.
They're doing something there now, ain't they?
Well, that's gonna be like a six, a six multifamily, once to its face. I don't know what it is, they, they haven't presented a plan yet. Have they? Have they brought anything in? So just for kicks, I want to make a comment, if I may, and, and you're probably all gonna go, this guy's losing his mind more than you already knew. All these things to consider, you have to consider them, you have to keep focused on them. But as you're focusing on them, always keeping your back of your mind too, this, this battle of the cities that, that is going on across the state to be competitive in economic development and incentive packages. Because if you don't have, you don't, you don't have those people that F thirty-five that are gonna move to Greenwood, or if you don't have another job here for them, or if you can't offer them something to stay here, you're, you're spinning your wheels. We got, we gotta take care of business, we gotta take care of these bills, and we gotta find the street department for some more money. You know, and, and it's one thing after the next, but if you're, but if you're not in this, in the mindset of hearing and understanding what other, and I'm not saying you copy everything everybody does, because we can't do what Beddville does or Rogers probably. But you gotta kind of stay in the, you gotta stay in contact and know what's, what's happening in order to get a, let's just say, a, a company to move into store craft. You know, what, what, what does it take to get them and to keep them? And, and they're offering some interesting packages. And I'll try to keep you up to date on some of that stuff. And it's, it's, so it's a big, it's a big balance. How do you keep what you got and how do you keep something going? Cause if you don't have a sales tax to pay for it.
It's all connected.
It is all connected.
So the growth is huge. Even though some people don't like growth. See, this county sales tax funds a lot of our operations in the, in the various departments. If, let's suppose our number doesn't grow. Let's suppose we stay at 95, 96, 100, but everybody else grows. Let's suppose Fort Smith goes to 95 and all these little towns start picking up the people that would have conned the Greenwood. And this 127,000 becomes 135,000, but we stayed the same. What happens to this number right here? It goes down.
And we're poised, sorry.
Go ahead.
We're so poised to be, I don't want to preach anything, y'all lived here a long time, most of you, but we're poised to do some incredible things and be able to, to do some things. And it's, and it starts, and we all know, a lot of that starts with our school district, what's being accomplished there. And if we just tag onto it and, and keep the ball rolling. But it's, but it's a hard balance. I mean, again, in two years, we gotta pass the city sales and use tax again and convince people that we're doing the right thing with those funds.
Well, I think Tom made a pretty good sell. Cause the argument for living in Greenwood is like, it was like 3.3%.
Absolutely, I, I, that's what I said, we, we've got a great, we've got selling points to do. Yeah, and, and gotta get the word out and, and then add to it. Add to it, you know, there are always people that want to move to Greenwood and they are moving because we are exactly what we are right now. They don't want anymore, they don't need anything else. But, but there are those that are looking and going, you know what? I can move, I love Greenwood, but I can go an hour to, now that the interstate, I can go north in an hour and get that plus everything else in the world. So.
It's gonna get worse once the interstate goes through the Alma area.
You got, you got a way to go anywhere you want to.
So this right here, this was what I presented as far as the city sales and use taxes concerned with the October sales, taxable sales for both 23 and 24. And I showed the city of Greenwood, which is this 6.9, 6.39% increase in our city sales and use tax. But what this shows over here is the 1% city's contribution to the county tax. We contributed a positive 11,530, while everybody else that were big cities came in at $80,000 less. And so because the whole, the whole amount was down $99,000, we bore our portion of that decrease. That's how that works. So I would love to say, hey guys, you're on your own. Give us our 11,530. Yeah, we should become a special district, huh? Is that what you're saying? No. Doesn't work that way. The county, the county taxes, share one, share all. And you saw, you saw the impact on Barling with the, with just three entities. And talking with the city manager of Barling, three entities killed them. And that's a big impact too, what's going on here, because that pulled $80,000 away from our county sales tax.
Yeah, something like that.
Right. Then they, of course, they, first thing they pointed out was the grocery store was huge as far as what they lost, but by replacing it with storage units, it didn't help them. Jaeger's is coming, I can't wait for that. That'll, that'll help them a lot. Barling, they're getting a, they're getting a Jaeger's. It's almost ready to open. Putting, finishing touches and inventory. So. Yeah.
Well, I can see, you can almost see a cross there. You can, they're, they're, they're closer than they were. As a, there was a meeting out there last, two weeks ago, I didn't, I didn't go. I wasn't invited. But I got five different opinions after the meeting from five different individuals. And, and they were all roughly the same. They're very, very close. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna, don't quote me on this, let's just say literally down to 18 inches here and 16 and 12 over here as far as what they need. Now, we had a meeting here in this building the other day with all departments. Everybody, I think, was involved eventually, time we got through with it, Sonny, from Jacob and the engineers. And so there's still a lot of things to be done and figured out in water lines, where they're going and roads and what's required of the Brahms and both, and the library, both. They are, it's kind of hesitant to say, but I think November, early November or mid-November, they're talking about some, you're gonna see more than just what you're seeing now. I mean, let's face it, in the last three months, that whole, that's taken a whole different appearance. So it's creeping, it's creeping forward.
Slowly getting them.
Yeah. So. And I'm, but I'm that firm believer that once one or both of those facilities get there, you're gonna see some other action happen. And, and I know they called them out, I'm in touch with Cheryl, who's still the realtor out there. A whole lot of entities are waiting for either one of those to get built, so then they can lock in, do what they're gonna do.
Another thing that comes up a lot, and we're seeing it now because some of our vendors are being audited for sales and use tax. We just received a request to send our sales tax exemption certificate to one. And we're not, it had nothing to do with the fire apparatus or fire equipment. And it had nothing to do with chemicals for creating water. So when we informed them, well, you, you didn't charge us tax, but that's shooting ourselves in the foot too, because that tax money that they didn't collect and remit didn't come back to us in the form of city or county sales tax. And if you buy something, you need to buy a destination point. That's when the, they are to collect Arkansas city sales and use tax. So don't ever buy something where it's, it's a origin. If you do, then they're collecting their tax, not ours, and we don't get any of it. So buy local if you can.
And if you're taxing the patient?
Exactly.
Cause we are taxing the patient.
And if you just have it shipped here, that's what you need to do, is have it shipped here.
Well, we've only seen one real case of it where it was origin. You buy it in Indiana and you tell them, they tell you that it's a FOV origin. But that tells us is that it's like you walking into their store and buying it off their shelf. They'll load it on a truck, but the minute that truck pulls away from their dock, it's yours. And if anything happens to that truck, they're not responsible as you are and that insurance of that trucking company. The only way that you would do anything in that, of that nature is if you had your own truck and you went up and picked up the item yourself. But normally it's shipped destination where they're responsible for it until you accept it on your premises. At that point, then the sales tax for state of Arkansas would be collected.
Easy peasy.
Lot of moving parts.
And so I guess, again, how's it when we do buy vehicles? I mean, is it's-
Vehicles are not sales tax for public properties. We pay a tag fee. Trailers, however, are. We do pay sales tax on trailers.
From now on, started years-
Couple of years ago, yeah. They changed the law. Not sure about equipment, off-road equipment, things that are not supposed to be on the roadways that are not tagged, like a backhoe or something like that. We don't find anything in the state law that says it's not to be taxed. And we have some departments where it is taxed, depending on where you buy it, and some departments where it's not.
Then we, then we have a, I know, Street finally got in there, tractor with the-
The boom, and the other tractor they bought too.
Yeah.
And neither one was taxed, same place though. So we're gonna call the Department of Finance Administration Sales and Use Tax Division, find out what's the rule on that.
Well, I, I, I'd say that in some ways, I mean, Greenwood is doing their, their fair share of both city-wise and county-wise. I mean, like you said, you know, I mean, we're, did a 11,000, you know, positives compared to everybody else. But yeah, we encourage people, you know, more to still shop local or, or file on internet. That must be better for us.
Well, the good thing is $18 million of goods or services are being purchased here or delivered here in the city of Greenwood, which is significant. That's a $1.1 million increase when the whole county went down 9.9 million. Imagine if we were flat. That's pretty much it in a nutshell.
And at Hartford, $336,000 in taxable sales.
Even though you don't like the numbers, that's a mistake. Even though you don't like the numbers.
It is what it is, we, it's better to know them and figure out what to do with them. We used to not know.
Tom. Up, up there on October 24 versus October 23 on Hartford? Well, nevermind.
Okay.
I was reading it wrong.
These numbers come right off of DFA's website, we have access to every city's-
I missed the point, I'm the dot there, I was looking at, without my glasses.
Oh, so you need it bigger? I can make it bigger.
Yeah, thank you. Now I can see the point five zero instead of 366.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But, you know, I'm not sure to be in our shoes to Barling right now though.
But then again, you know, if you're complacent and you don't constantly strive to grow your city, you'll end up like that.
I'll just keep going to Greenwood grocery stores so they don't shut down.
That's true.
Using, using Greenwood businesses.
Yep. Well, that's it. If you have any questions of them.
Anything else for Mr. Marsh or these guys?
Thank you very much, Tom.
Pizza is there, I don't know how much is left, but
That it?
Take it home, yeah, take it home, somebody take that home and eat. Or what you don't take home, but we'll leave tomorrow, somebody will. Thank you, everybody.